Meeting come to order, please. I thought you'd hear that in a minute. Thank you. Roll call, press your present button, please. Well, now, is it working? Bear with us, folks. It's not coming up at all. Two more minutes from there. Have we got a chance? Ding, time's up. Clerk take the roll, please. Thank you. Staff announcements?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. My first announcement is the machine isn't working. Uh, sorry about that.
For the second week in a row?
Yes. My second announcement is, just a reminder to those interested, the next meeting of the Grassman Small Area Plan Community Outreach or Community Input Meeting will be sometime in October. I don't think we've established a date yet, but I just wanted to remind the Planning Commission, anybody else who might be interested, that is coming together. Two announcements regarding two items on the consent agenda. They, item seven and item 12, there is an amended report in front of you. They will still be heard under the consent agenda, but I just wanted to make you aware of it. As you might be hearing me read something that's not necessarily in your packet if you didn't do it otherwise. And finally, we did get a little good news a few weeks ago. As it turns out, we were nominated and have received the Implementation Award from Tennessee Chapter of American Planning Association for the new zoning ordinance. We got that word. And it's for the best large community. I'm not sure what separates us from a small community, but that's what we have. But the award will be handed out in a couple of weeks, maybe two weeks from tonight, as a matter of fact. But I think it's a tribute to the hard work done by a number of people over the past several years. You know, be it staff members, be it Planning Commissioner members, be it Steering Committee members, be it the folks in general public who attended all the meetings. So to that extent, I think it's a, you know, we may get to pick up the award, but it's a shared award. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Consideration of the minutes of August 8th. Any corrections or changes? Motion made in seconds. We're going to voice votes, see if they can get that thing going. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Any open in the staff?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Consideration of the consent agenda. Any commissioner wishing to pull an item from consent agenda, please say so now, otherwise we'll take it as a whole. Anyone? None? Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with item three. Addition to Legends Ridge, Section 2A, Lot 924. Performance bond for roads drainage and erosion control. $65,000 recommendation to extend in current amount for a period of six months. Item four, Bell Vista, Section 3. Performance bond for roads drainage and erosion control. $350,000 recommendation. Reduce performance bond to $243,000 and extend for a period of one year. Item five, Chardonnay, Section 3. Maintenance bond for water. $8,500 recommendation. Release the bond. Item six, Delta Springs. Maintenance bond for roads drainage and erosion control. $125,000 recommendation. Extend in current amount for a period of six months. Item seven, Gateway Church. Performance bond for landscaping. $37,350 recommendation. Extend in current amount for a period of six months. Item eight, Ends of the Cove. Section 1. Maintenance bond for wastewater treatment disposal system. $74,639 recommendation. Extend in current amount for a period of one year. Item nine, Ends of the Cove. Section 1. Maintenance bond for wastewater collection system. $80,861 recommendation. Extend in current amount for a period of one year. Item 10, Silverstream Farms. Section 4B. Performance bond for sewer. $10,000 recommendation. Convert to maintenance in amount of $20,000 for a period of one year. Item 11, Silverstream Farms. Section 8. Maintenance bond for landscaping. $11,175 recommendation. Release the bond. Item 12, The Grove. Section 2. Maintenance bond for water. $75,000 recommendation. Release the bond.
Questions on consent? Anyone? Motion? Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes Agenda Items 3 through 12. And I'm looking for my agenda. Agenda item 13. Amendment to the 2013 Official Zoning Maps Regarding the Following Tax Maps, Tax Maps, Parcels, and Zoning Districts. Counsel, do I need to read that?
Yes, sir.
Oh. Okay, here we go. To rezone from suburban infill and conservation SI to rural preservation 5, RP 5. Tax map 038. Parcels 12, 11, 5.01, 11, 5.02, 5, 4, 4.01, 4.02, 16.0, 3.01, 16.01, 17.0, and 18.0. To rezone from rural preservation RP 1 to rural preservation RP 5. Tax map 038. Parcels 19, 20.03, 20, 24.10, 24.11, 24.00, and 24.8. And to rezone from rural preservation 1 to rural preservation 5. Tax map 051. Parcels 12.01, 11.02, 11.03, 11.04, 11.05, 11.10, 11.07, 11.08, 10.03, 10.02, and 10.08. For those of you in the audience who are not familiar with our public hearing procedures, they're as follows. At the conclusion of the staff report, you'll be invited to come to the podium. If you would at that time give us your name and address, we would appreciate it. I would also suggest, and I'm sure there's a lot of you like to speak, when the person in front of you says, "I don't like this, 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 and this," and you concur, the best thing you can say on your behalf is, "I agree." And sit down. Okay? Because we don't need to hear it 47 times to understand it. We're not the smartest guys in the room, I'm sure, but we will catch on. Okay? We good to go? Staff?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicants have requested a map amendment in order to rezone 31 parcels along Old Hillsborough Road and Del Rio Pike from their present zoning, which is a combination of suburban infill and conservation and rural preservation 1 to rural preservation 5. A signed petition making this request has been received from the owners of each of these parcels. The chief distinction between the existing zoning districts and the proposed zoning district relates to the density of residential development allowed, which is as follows. In the suburban infill and conservation zoning district, 1.2 dwelling units per acre. Rural preservation 1 is 1 dwelling unit per acre. And rural preservation 5 is 1 dwelling unit per 5 acres. Essentially, these property owners have requested a downzoning of their properties, in that the requested zoning district is more restrictive than the existing zoning districts from the standpoint of allowable residential density. Section 4.05 of the zoning ordinance provides some guidance in such matters by outlining a number of factors that should be considered when evaluating a request for a map amendment. Staff believes that a number of these factors may be viewed as supporting this request. One of the key factors that should be considered is the extent to which a proposed map amendment is consistent with the county's comprehensive land use plan. Staff does not believe the existing zoning in this area is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. However, an argument can also be made that the requested zoning is not inconsistent with the overall goals and policies of the plan. The area where there appears to be less consistency between the requested map amendment and the comprehensive plan is the area currently zoned suburban infill and conservation, which mirrors the comprehensive plan recommendation for this area. However, in evaluating this request, staff believes that the Harpeth River forms a logical geographic boundary and that the area south of the river, within the area currently zoned SIC, is very similar in character with the properties further to the south that are currently zoned rural preservation 1 or rural preservation 5. Based on these findings, coupled with the fact that the property owners are voluntarily requesting that a more restrictive zoning district be applied to the property, staff recommends that the requested map amendment for these 31 properties be approved and that the attached resolution be forwarded to the county commission for adoption. Mr. Chairman, I do have a few additional items to point out.
Yes, sir.
The first is that one property owner that is in this list has requested that his property be withdrawn from this request. For the record, that property is parcel 10.08 on map 51. And so any motion to approve this item should specifically exclude that parcel. I also want to mention to you that we have received, as I know you have, a number of pieces of correspondence related to this item, and we have those before you. And then finally, as you know, there are a couple of items on tonight's agenda that relate to rezoning. There are different types of requests, but they're related to zoning nonetheless. And those are items 13, this item, as well as item 19 at the end of the agenda. Given the fact that historically we haven't seen a great deal of rezonings, and given the fact that you've received and have before you a lot of correspondence regarding these issues, I thought it would be helpful to you and also helpful to the public to spend just a few minutes giving you some background information and trying to frame the issues and set the stage for these two items that will be before you tonight. And I'm going to use a couple of maps to do this in addition to the maps that were included in your agenda package. Those maps are in front of you as well as projected on the screen. And what I'd like to do is start with the existing zoning, and that's what is on the screen now, just to give you an understanding of how the zoning is out there currently. To orient you, north is at the top. Old Hillsborough Road runs diagonally from the upper right-hand corner to the lower left-hand corner. The area in blue is currently zoned suburban infill and conservation. That's the one that I mentioned earlier. Allows a maximum residential density of about 1.2 units per acre. As you get further south on Old Hillsborough, you'll notice that by and large, the properties on the west side are illustrated in dark green. Properties on the east side are illustrated in light green. The light green color is rural preservation 1. And again, as I mentioned earlier, in the staff report, that's a zoning district that allows a density of 1 unit per acre. And then rural preservation 5, which is predominantly what you see on the west side of Old Hillsborough Road, south of the blue area, is rural preservation 5 now, which is 1 unit per 5 acres. So those are the relevant zoning districts, and that's kind of the lay of the land currently. And that's, the picture that you see up there is very similar to what the zoning has been for many years in the area with some minor changes. So now on to the second map, if we could. And this second map, I think, illustrates the requests that are before you tonight, whether they're in item 13 or in item 19. And I want to spend some time going through this and trying to make sure that you have an understanding of these properties. And let me start by saying that the zoning ordinance specifies the ways in which a rezoning request can come about and can be initiated. And those ways are either that a property owner can request that his property or her property, or their properties plural, be rezoned. So one way is property owner initiation. And that's what we have in this item 13 that we just read the staff report for and that is subject to the public hearing. Those properties are illustrated in green on this map. And so item 13, for the public hearing, relates to the 30 now, with one coming out. Now, there are 30 properties that, the owners of which have requested a rezoning from either suburban infill and conservation or RP 1 to RP 5. So that's the green. That's the people who have requested a rezoning for their properties and for which we have a petition and received that petition in time to get that on tonight's agenda. In addition to item 13, you know that item 19 also relates to rezoning issues. The other way that a rezoning application can be initiated is through an action by either the planning commission or the county commission. And so in item 19, there is a request that you all consider initiating a rezoning for all of the properties up there that are shown in a color other than green. Remember, the green are the parcels that are subject to item 13 and for which we have a petition currently that was received by the deadline. So item 19 is a request that you all initiate a rezoning for those additional properties. Some of those additional properties, we now have petitions for. Those were not received in time to get those included in this item 13. But we do have petitions from the property owners for some of those additional properties. And those properties for which we have a petition are shown in yellow on the map. So in addition to those properties, the request in item 19 is that you also initiate a rezoning for the properties in red. And the properties in red represent those properties for which there is not a request by the property owners. So item 13 is the items, is the parcels in green. We've got the petitions. That's what the public hearing is about. Item 19 is a request that you all initiate a rezoning for those additional properties, some of which we have a petition for, some of which we do not. Procedurally, on item 13, there's going to be a public hearing. And then the planning commission, the planning commission's vote when it occurs is in the form of a recommendation to the county commission. Following the planning commission's action on the request, the county commission would hear. They would also hold a public hearing. And their decision would be to, whether to approve the rezoning or not to approve the rezoning. From a procedural standpoint, on item 19, if you all do initiate the rezoning request, those properties would be placed on the October planning commission agenda as a public hearing item, just as those in item 13 are tonight. And it would follow the same process from there. If you all were to choose not to initiate the rezoning in 19, we still have the petitions for the properties in yellow. And those petitions would be placed on the October agenda just with a property owner request, like the ones in item 13. So I just wanted to take a few minutes to kind of explain the issues and differentiate between the two. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ma'am. Love the public hearing at this time. If you would come to the podium, as I said earlier, give us your name and address, we would appreciate it. And you can queue up at this time. Our commissioners, I tried to get him to let ladies go first. He would not do it. Mr. Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
I hate to strain on your parade. This is Agenda Item 13, and I will say that to the audience, too. Confine absolutely your remarks to Agenda Item 13. That's what this hearing is about. Thank you. I can.
Now?
Even better.
So you, I could, Mr. Chairman, you're not going to allow me to address 15 to 19?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, on 13, the staff has approved that those, there's only a petition, which is basically 31 with one withdrawn, and that they be allowed to go to the county commission. As the ninth county, ninth district commissioner, I would request that it go to the county commission and be set for a vote before the county commission in the October meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Mary Brockman, 1407 Old Hillsborough Road. I thought it appropriate to wear both hats, property owner and county commissioner. And sort of set the tone in terms of, how did we get here? Because a rezoning is a very big deal. After being here at the June and August meetings for a proposal that was coming to Old Hillsborough Road, I've been a commissioner for a while, and I know a lot of my neighbors. And they called me and they said, "What can you do? This is out of character with the community." So after those meetings, I asked planning staff, commissioners. I said, "Everyone's saying, what can I do?" And their response was, "If you don't want to see this happen again, if everyone is so unhappy about this, you need to file a resolution." And so that's why we're here tonight with this request. I was a little bit reluctant to go out there and say, knock on doors and say, "Who's interested in actually changing their zoning to RP 5?" And I was overwhelmed by the support from the community. It was, it's one thing to get my husband, who signed, willingly, by the way. Didn't have to do any convincing. He absolutely believes this is the right zoning district for our area. In order to establish, based on the comprehensive land use plan and based on our current development pattern, in order to establish a consistent and desirable zoning pattern, landowners have voluntarily requested to be placed in the rural preservation 5 zoning district. The basic premise is to preserve the community character of large lot estates and small farms for forest home and halt suburban 1-acre plans from creating a domino effect. That is what we're really here to say. And when I say forest home, if you're new to Williamson County, what in the heck is forest home? Well, let me just say, it's more than just a historic marker, which is there, across from one of the old stores. And it is, it's, we still have a remnant of the landscape that represents this particular area. And it's because a lot of people thought they had rural preservation 5. And people have spoken, basically, to the idea that this is what this represents. When you look at a historic house, one of the things that's the rule of thumb is, would you recognize the area? I mean, would you recognize the house if you came back and you'd lived there 100 years ago? And so I think the same is true of forest home. Has it changed? Has the landscape changed? Absolutely. There are 5-acre lots. And then there are some areas tucked away with 2- and 3-acre lots with houses, forest home, Mont Pier. But overall, we're, we have the stone walls and the historic Perkins houses. It's a special area. All right. In August, as the county commissioner, I asked people if they would be interested in voluntarily doing this. And I thought all the petitions were going to come in together. Some would come in later, but that would be all right. The staff indicated that they really couldn't do it that way. And I understand. I didn't know at the time. Perhaps I should have known, but I was not told that that was procedurally the way it could go forward. So the property owners are galvanized. And on the basis for the rezoning is really their three elements. Number one, and most important, is property owner support. And I think if you're here and support, if you could raise your hand? All right. Some of these are property owners, and some of them are here to support it. It's important to note, when looking at the level of support for rezoning, it really is a super, super majority. I started going out, looking at asking residents, asking homeowners, stakeholders. 112 acres. 8 acres, 10 acres, 12 acres, 31 acres, 20 acres, 30 acres, 35 acres, 18 acres, 55 acres, 100 acres, 61 acres, 11 acres. Well, you get the point. They said, "Where do I sign? This is the right district for this area. This is why I live here." Secondly, the topography. Mike mentioned it in his staff report. It's so obvious. It's the river. The geography of the Harpeth River forms a natural boundary line for the area and has helped establish the current land use pattern. The landscape represents the largest floodplain area in this part of the river in Williamson County, known as meeting of the waters, the confluence of the main Harpeth and the west Harpeth. We don't have sewer. We have a lot of floodplain. And we're not in the growth boundary. So I don't see us getting annexed in my lifetime. And so there we have the pattern that we all love. Thirdly, what is rural preservation? That's what's called for in the comprehensive land use plan. What does it mean? The plan, the long-range goal, was to encourage the protection of predominantly agricultural, equestrian, and rural economic uses, recognizing that single-family residential development must tread lightly on the rural landscape through development either on very large lots or development in a form that is consistent with the rural landscape with significant amounts of open space. People will say, "Why didn't this happen during the zoning ordinance update?" I was on the steering committee, and I know the answer. There were many of us who tried to make this happen based on the consultant looking at the landscape. We used the term rural preservation. We defined it. There was not the political will to alter any density in any area that had been forged years ago. And so it just, it didn't ever gain any momentum. Commissioner Judy Hayes and I tried to make some arguments. Planning Commissioner Crowhan was cognizant of the fact that 1-acre zoning maybe doesn't really signify preservation. So it didn't happen. Now, it has traction. Why does it have traction? Because there's, sometimes you need a catalyst to induce change. The community of stakeholders represents an important voice for this special landscape. Before, we felt like we're out on a limb. Now, we feel like we're a forest. When you look at the big picture from a long lens, it truly represents the inherent value of rural preservation for the benefit of all in Williamson County and future generations. And I do hope you will support this effort.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I'm Dory Bowles, and I'm the executive director for the Harpeth River Watershed Association. And our organization worked hard with Commissioner Brockman to put together this rezoning package with the landowners. I wanted to just take a few minutes and focus on it from the perspective of the health of the Harpeth River watershed and how important this is, and how it fits with the land use plan. First of all, the Harpeth River Watershed Association was founded in 1999, and our mission is to protect the state scenic Harpeth River and clean water in Tennessee. We're a science-based organization. We have a lot of expertise in river restoration, watershed and land use planning, stormwater, clean water law. And a lot of y'all know me personally because I serve as the vice chair of the Stormwater Appeals Board for Williamson County, as well as for the city of Franklin. And I also was a member of the comp plan update forum. So a lot of us have worked a long time on the award-winning land use plan and the zoning ordinance. So just to touch briefly on the importance of the Harpeth River Valley. But that's what this area is. And it's a piece of the large part of the county that's in the western part of the county. That's called rural preservation. What our organization does is try and look for large contiguous areas that are rural and undeveloped that have significance in terms of protecting water quality and ecological integrity around this entire river system, which includes six counties. And this is the one in northern Williamson County. This is what's left of a very fertile floodplain agricultural sector. It's very important in terms of floodplain storage. 40% of the Harpeth River system drains into this area. So all the growth of Franklin, southeastern Williamson County, Thompson Station. And as Mary pointed out, you know, this is the area where the river has a big, it's basically a big storage basin. So everyone who lives out there is very respectful of the river in terms of floodplain. It's also one of the reasons why the water quality is very good and why we have 50 different species of fish, different species of fish, which is amazing because in the Colorado River Basin, there are only twenty-three. These rivers in the southeast are unique on the planet, and a lot of the owners of these large properties, a lot of us with our small streams, we are the stewards of this incredible resource. So Mary's already pointed out the compelling reasons for the rezoning under the land use plan, so I won't repeat it, and plus, it's in your package. But I do want to reiterate that in order to maintain rural preservation, the land use plan was very clear that the maximum single-family residential gross density allowed would be one dwelling unit for five acres. And when we went through into the zoning, land use plan, the zoning ordinance, we knew there were parts of it that had one acre density, and that just wasn't changed. Now is the time, and as you can see, the landowners are very interested in it, most of them thought it was all rural preservation five anyway. So by having it all consistent, we can maintain the rural character and the water quality in this area. So basically, in closing, like Mary Brockman said, and I've been doing a lot of the work with her and talking to landowners, there are over ninety-three percent at this point who've either signed documents or given verbal support. There are two others we're still working on because they're out of town, frankly, and they've been out of the country. So I don't think that because they're in red, that necessarily means that they're not supporting it. The, and as Mary indicated, this was filed as one contiguous package of forty-nine parcels, now forty-eight. There is, we want to make sure as it goes through the process, that ultimately gets to county commission as one package. We don't have two different groups going at two different times. So when you approve item nineteen for a public hearing in October, then after that, it'll be good to try and consolidate that to go to county commission. So all the property owners are being considered at the same time and not in two different batches. But those are procedures for another day. The important thing is to, the staff has been fantastic in working through all this, and they've done a great job with all the maps, those maps are awesome. And so really just support what the staff has recommended in terms of the rezoning on item thirteen and making the motion on item nineteen. There are hardly any properties on item nineteen that haven't voiced some support.
Thank you very much.
Nineteen is a no-no.
I'm Todd Kastner, I live at three-two-one-zero Del Rio Pike, and I've signed the petition in support of this item thirteen. And moving to Del Rio Pike was really the culmination of twenty years of searching and striving to do so. And we relied upon, Susan and I, the county's land use plan, its description of rural preservation area, its designation of five acre maximum lot density. We then drove the preponderance of our net worth into creating a small horse farm with a house that we tried to set gently into the landscape. We were and remain very respectful of being blessed to be able to live next to the oldest of the historic Perkins family homes, Meeting of the Waters circa eighteen oh nine, eighteen oh nine, that's twenty years after the US Constitution went into effect, thirty-three years after the signing of the Declaration of Independence. This immediate area features an amazing concentration of history and rural scenery, and you see that with a high number of historic registered homes. Old Virginia, the Pennsylvania Dutch countryside, and Lexington, Kentucky's horse country have nothing on the Harpeth River Valley and Old Hillsborough Road. Every day, we see tourists stopping to photograph horses, sunsets, cows, hay bales, barns, but we have this conflict of laws. And it was very surprising to us to find that this area has one acre zoning and rural preservation one acre zoning. Now, that's an interesting term, that's nonsensical, it's oxymoronic at best. Upon learning of this discrepancy, the property owners themselves, as you know, sought this proposed zoning change because they too relied on and believe in the county's land use plan. If we asked tourists to describe Green Hills or West Mead or Creve Hall with their one acre lots, none of them would use the word rural or preserved in their descriptions at all. And this is my most significant point, the ordinance itself clearly subordinates itself to the land use plan in section one oh five, where the ordinance states, "In the event of a conflict between the land use plan and the zoning ordinance, it is the ordinance that should be changed to match the land use plan." Your staff has done a wonderful job of presenting this recommendation in the form of items thirteen and the one I can't mention, and we greatly appreciate their diligent, fine work. Bucolock areas are only developed once and they're gone forever, and we can lose this area very quickly. If one acre lot developments begin, we will have an exorable domino effect, and Old Hillsborough Road will pretty soon look like every other developed suburban area. My neighbors and I seek this zoning change in order to protect our property values. Please, please protect our irreplaceable river valley and scenic rural area. We are an essential part of the setting that creates historic Franklin. Please recommend that the zoning ordinance be brought into conformity with the county use plan and support items thirteen and the other one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name is Richard Warden. I live at thirty-two forty Del Rio Pike, Todd's neighbor just to the west. We built our home in a soybean field with, and had a tobacco base twenty years ago. We love the area, we want to keep it like it is, preserve it like it is, and key enough, what you said, Mr. Lackey, I heard you loud and clear, I agree with everything that Todd said. Thank you.
My name is James Cox, I live at eleven-twelve Settlers Court, which is just off of Old Hillsborough Road. I am a businessman, I've had a business here in Williamson County since two thousand. I do not think the word profit is a four-letter word. I think everybody's entitled to one. The problem I have is when it comes at the cost of the quality of life. I don't think anyone in here would say that increasing this density would be in anyone's interest. The traffic, if I can find one hand in here that says the traffic in Williamson County is good, I'd like to see it. And secondly, being an engineer, I can tell you that no system is a hundred percent efficient. And all these houses are either going to be on a septic tank or something similar, and they're going to be producing waste into the Harpeth that is beyond what is currently there. So when you go home at night, tonight, and you take a glass of water, think about that part, if nothing else. Thank you.
My name's Steve King, I live at sixteen ninety-five Old Hillsborough, and my wife and I have signed the petition in support of the item thirteen rezoning. The reason we support the rezoning is because we feel like the center of the road makes a bad boundary between different densities, different zoning districts. The Harpeth River seems to us, by moving the boundary to the Harpeth River, you unlock the potential for the RP five zoning on the west side of the road. And if we don't do that, then it's really squandered when RP one development occurs on the east side of the road. Also, I don't think this will be redundant, so go ahead and mention it. You know, Nashville and Franklin, we don't have tall mountains or sandy beaches. The only thing that we really have by way of natural resources to recommend us right here is this beautiful rural landscape in close proximity to our urban areas. And when it's gone, it's gone, and I'll guarantee you, a lot of metropolitan areas would kill to get that stuff back. Thank you.
I'm Mr. Kenny, I live at four-ten Kenny Road, and I do farm. I got a letter here the other day, says a request for a property to be rezoned, which joins me on the back, and by this map, I see it's more than what was on the letter. And I got the letter twelve days ago, I really hadn't had to get together with the family to see how this is going to affect us, but I know it will. And by spot zoning, you're destroying what the county comprehensive plan that I went to meeting after meeting after meeting here, trying to stay up with, and watch this, and as soon as the ink gets dry, they won't start changing things. I think it's wrong. I do think it's wrong, and also, I think it either needs to be deferred so we can get with the family and study it. Once you let this spot zoning get changed, it's just like a cancer, they'll try to take over and take over, and I, as an old farmer, I know how you get stepped on, as long as they got food on the table. Thank you.
Michael Myers, one oh nine Harpeth Hills Drive. I wrote a copy of this award-winning plan, it's a pretty daunting document. We go to a lot of trouble when we write it to make sure that we listen to everyone's voice, everyone has input, and it's a conglomeration of all those different viewpoints, it's supposed to be fair to everybody, all the property owners, not just the ones that are here today. My concern about this voluntary rezoning thing is that it sets a dangerous precedent for listening to only one voice in the formation of this document, and we never do that, we never have, and I don't think we should. Because even the people in this room are going to be on the receiving end of something that, another special interest group who wants to stick it to their property when they're not paying attention. We never changed the rules this soon. When we do this, we write it for a twenty-year span. We did this a year ago. I've got the voting record right here, Mary Brockman, Commissioner Brockman moved for it to be accepted. The vote was twenty-one to one to approve this. Now, we don't ever let anyone come to the game in the fourth quarter and call a timeout because they don't like the way the last play was called, and start furiously trying to change the rules. The rest of us have left our seat. We should have the right to go to the bathroom, and before we get back in our seat, the rules of the game will not have changed. We might miss a player or two, but dead gummit, I mean, if we're going to do this and go to all this work, and it's about as much fun as being drugged behind a pickup truck, we're going through this in grassland right now, it's horrible amount of work, five or six public hearings. We're supposed to bind ourselves to this law once it's done. That's supposed to be the end of the discussion. If we set this precedent to just listen to one group to change it, it's going to be really hard to close that door once it's open. I'm serious. I was standing on John Kenny's farm not too long ago, looking across his crops, and I could see the houses across the river on the other side, and I thought to myself, what a beautiful view they've got. And John Kenny's family provides that view for them free of charge. It's a struggle, it's a generational struggle, and they do it, and they give it to us for free. It's a byproduct of their way of life. And we have no right to ask them for even more when they get to the point where they can't do it anymore. When their needs change, if we're a real community and we care about the community, we need to be inclusive, and then we need to be looking to the needs of all of our members, not just the newcomers, not just the people in this room, but everybody. We have a responsibility, even to people that are unborn yet, they'll come to this county, because this plan right here sets a template for what they will find when they get here. We can't keep flip-flopping on this issue. If we're going to write a book that everyone says it's award-winning work, then we need to stick to it. There's no reason for us to rezone this property. There's plenty of private ways people can effect the same change. If they feel this strongly about this, they can put a conservation easement on it, they can put it in a land trust, they can do this for themselves. We never go back, we write the law for the maximum density allowable, we never go back and change it if someone decides to build less than the allowable amount. They can do that, it's their right. We would never get anything done if we kept doing that. I'm really concerned that, I mean, it seems like a good idea and it's their property, and I'm not opposed to them doing that to their property, but it's undisguised attempt to force it down the throat of other people who aren't willing to go along. And those people have a right to profit, and it's not a dirty word, from all the struggle, all the generational struggle that they've been through, after they've given it to us for free, I just can't see the ethical, how we can do that, I don't understand how we can get there. Honestly, I don't. And really, I don't think there's any reason to do it. And I would implore the commission to keep their bond with the majority who made this decision and knew they were making a long-term decision and not changed their mind a year after the fact. Thank you.
My name's Stuart Campbell, and I live on seventeen fifteen Old Hillsborough Road, two-hundred-and-twenty acres there, bought it fifteen, sixteen years ago, enjoy the area, have Settlers Point to my south with acre lots, nice houses, doesn't seem to cause a lot of trouble, doesn't seem to be very hard to look at. The other houses over in the areas of Mont Pierre and whatever have acre lots, some acre lots, doesn't seem to have a terrible effect on things, but... So...
Courtesy to him that he exercised to you, okay? Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to just say, I'd like to keep the zoning on my property the same as it is, one acre lots. I've talked with my three joining neighbors, Mr. Boris Magley, Mr. Richard Gore, and Kirsten Moltman, which makes up about four-hundred-and-sixty-five acres, that we want our zoning to remain as it is, one acre lots. Thank you.
My name's Mary Wade, my husband and I live at the corner of Del Rio and Old Hillsborough, sixteen forty-five Old Hillsborough Road. I'd like to make the point that I was appalled when I found out that the county regs did not protect me from this dense development, and therefore I think that regs, county regs and laws, they're an evolving situation. And I think that going to rural preservation five would be a great step forward. It's not pro-development, it is for smart development that suits this area, that suits our property. Thank you.
My name is Gabrielle Hanson, I live at three fifteen Byron Way. I don't even live on Hillsborough Road, I live within five minutes, but I have the absolute pleasure of driving that way on numerous occasions. I'm also a Realtor, and I'm not willing to sell my soul, my principles, or my values for density. There's a big price tag that comes with increased density. It's called schools, it's called shopping centers, it's called wider roads, it's called the destruction of nature, and it's also a generation that's going to be left out in the future when there's no open lands, when there's no bits and pieces of our past that are left for them to see except what's in a photograph. The price is far too high. There's a reason why people have given up everything to move here, there's a reason why this great community and this great county are written up in magazines in the top ten in almost every desirable fashion to either visit or live, and it's because of the quality of life here, which is a direct relationship to the nature, to the open lands, to the properties that we have. And if we start shrinking those and adding density, we're going to be no different than Alpharetta, Georgia, we're going to be no different than Atlanta, we're just going to be another cookie cutter community out there, and the price tag is far too high. This is for our future generations, it's not for right now, and it's regrettable that families have had financial hardships that have caused them to sell out. Maybe they can't live with themselves at night because of what they've done, just because they had to sell something to make a living or to put food on the table because they can't pay the price. The recent review appeal said that our green belt lands in Williamson County are decreasing at a rate of approximately two percent or more per year. That means there won't be any more for the next generation. That's a very, very sad statistic. It's sad for this county, it's part of what's made this county and this city and this community so great. It's not time to sell out, there'll be people in long after you, and what's going to remain is what people will remember, how you voted on this, and your name will be attached to it for the generations to come.
My name's Tom Powers, I live at eight-six-eight High Point Ridge Road in Franklin, over in Forest Home Farms. I'm an arborist. I get to see views most people don't get to see all the time because I create them for people that have beautiful majestic properties like this. I live there because I get to drive home every day and see one of the most beautiful sights, two and... sights, to and from work. I get to decompress. And to think that I get to drive home and see the back of 10 houses under construction, I can understand people adjacent wanting to sell out if they had to look at that every day. It's so discouraging. I've been doing this for 15 years, going home and enjoying that view. I make those views for people all over Tennessee. I work in Kentucky, Alabama, Mississippi, Louisiana for plantations. When I see that, you know, the reason why I bought, I thought it was grandfathered in, and I was fortunate. No, my lot isn't five acres, but it's a two-acre lot. But other, other homes in that community have the difference that make up, I think, the average of a five-acre lot in the whole. But when I think that they're going to just dice it up right there where everyone gets to ride their bikes, go on runs, get to enjoy the nature, the historic value, one of the most beautiful sights in the United States, and I've traveled all over, and I've seen a lot of pretty sights, but this is consistently one of the most beautiful sights, and I'm asking y'all to help preserve the area. Thank you.
My name is Susan Houghton. I live at 1205 Perkins Lane in Mont Pierre Farms, and I'm just speaking off the cuff. I did not intend to come up and speak to you all, but my husband runs a multimedia company that recently bought Lonely Planet guidebooks, and I just thought you all would be interested to know that in the past, actually, month, there have been visitors from Holland, Argentina, Australia, all over the UK, Macedonia, all over Europe, and all over the country in California and other beautiful places around our beautiful country, and I have not heard anyone rave more and more about our beautiful area. Pictures all over Instagram. I'm definitely, I may be one of the younger property owners in here. I just turned, I'll turn 26 in December, and so just from a younger generation, how much this means. So I just thought you'd be interested to know that this is not just about the people that live here, but people all over the world value this beautiful area. Thanks.
My name is Joe Casia. I have the privilege of being the caretaker, and I call myself caretaker of the actual home that this is named after, Meeting of the Waters. I'm the first non-direct descendant to ever live there. I bought it for the simple reason of what we're asking you to do right now, and that's be a caretaker of something that's very, very special. There are five historic homes within a stone's throw of this area, and I've had people come from all over the country, come picnic in my yards, knock at my door, ask can they see the home, because they say it's one of the most beautiful places they've ever seen in their lives. Don't lose that. Don't lose that for future generations. Thank you.
Laura Turner, 1108 Dickinson Lane. I am the spokesperson for Citizens for Old Natchez Trace, and the intersection of Old Natchez Trace and Old Hillsborough Road is a part of the view shed of the recently, we're so thrilled with the recently adopted Highway Commission plans to utilize a sensitive context for the repaving project. Old Natchez Trace has been recognized as a national treasure. There are eight National Register Historic Sites on it. The view shed as you enter on and leave the Old Natchez Trace is very important. The Scenic America has named this area off the Harpeth River Valley Last Chance Landscape, one of the most endangered scenic places in America. The scenic, historic, and cultural resources, the stone walls, the visual beauty, the serenity, the peace that we get when we travel, the trace and Old Hillsborough Road in this area are worth preserving and protecting. Thank you.
I live on Price Road. Been out there 28 years. Moved out there for the countryside. Came from California, from the big cities, to the countryside. I was so disappointed and cynical that there's a subdivision that's trying to be built out on Old Hillsborough Road. I just want to say that I've enjoyed my countryside. I would like to see it the same, and the rezoning of the five acres instead of the one acres, if that has to be, well, then that has to be, but I just want you to know that I've been there so long and enjoyed it. We came home tonight, my wife and I, and we, we saw the countryside and saw where they're going to build 20 homes, like a little baby West Haven or something there, and it just didn't seem like that would fit the community. Thank you.
My name is Jim Callaway. I live at 4080 New Highway 96 West. Love to change the name of that highway. But anyway, New Highway 96 West, up and down Old Hillsborough Road quite a lot, and lived previously for 20 years at Old Natchez Trace and Moran Road. I'd just like to say that I hope that everyone will learn to appreciate each other and where we're coming from and not cause a lot of division and bad feelings with people. But if we had the feeling that we could trust a developer not to take advantage and squeeze in as much housing as they could on acreage, but rather build with, with a sensitivity toward the area and toward the land and not come in and build a 5,000-square-foot honky chateau on every acre like they did over in Brentwood, then we might be in better shape with all this. So if you don't like, if you don't like this Realtor, don't say his name. I see his name all up and down the highway. Save Old Hillsborough. Forget the Realtor.
Folks, give me a break. I'm not going to ask you again. I'll close the public hearing. You understand? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. My name's Mike Corn. I live on Old Hillsborough Road, 1577. My only counsel to you is, as you look at this, let's be complete in what we do and not spot zone. I agree with the person that's before me in spot rezoning and having pockets. If we're going to do something, and we're doing it for a good reason, do it all.
Last call? Final one. Go ahead, sir.
Jim Slater, Settlers Point. So, Settlers Point, lived there for 30 years, 32 years. So the point about spot rezoning, I don't understand, because we moved there 35 to 32 years ago. There was a whole land use plan that talked about making that area a five-acre development. Now it's a one acre, and I don't know how that happened. There were never any signs on the road that said, "We're rezoning that to one acre." But now people are saying they're being challenged by a document that's two inches thick that says it's one acre. They went completely by me. I'm not this sharpest knife in the drawer, but I'm not all that dense either. So I think that what's important is what the other 90% of the people have said tonight about keeping this historic area in five-acre lots, maximum, minimum.
We'll close the public hearing this time. Thank you. While you're thinking, I'll tell you how part of this got started, and Commissioner Brockman asked me what to do, and I said, you know, if you can get all the people to sign a petition that that's what they want to be, that's what you ought to do. I don't have a problem with that, folks. I'll be honest with you. I do have a problem with you saying our plan is inconsistent. There is such a thing as Rule Preservation 1. We can preserve one-acre lot tracts through conservation subdivisions. So don't stand in front of me and tell me that you can't do that. I think you need to know, though, even in RP 5, you can have one-acre lots. Do you understand that? Okay, I just wanted you to know, because everybody's thinking it's going to be five acres. You can do conservation subdivisions. Okay? It requires significant preservation, but that's part of it. As I said, I don't have a problem with it. If it's a down zoning, it's not a spot zoning. If there's a spot zoning, it's you folks. It's not the folks left. That's not the definition of spot zoning. We're not changing their zoning, we're changing your zoning. So you're the spot zoners, if there is such an animal here. I want that to be clear in a planning perspective. Anyone have a comment? Thoughts?
For approval with staff recommendations.
Most maiden second. Any further discussion? We get the machine to work, Linae. We're not... Discussion?
Excluding that one parcel?
Excluding that one parcel.
Hang on, Pete.
That was map, map, map 51, parcel 10.08.
To be removed from your motion.
Correct.
Pete?
Yes, I agree with these people that speak up saying that this plan was done with a purpose, and it had ample notification of meetings and things of this nature, and it was zoned one acre back when I started on the planning commission, and that's been as long as anything, you know? But I don't think anyone has the right to force a zoning change on somebody else's property. If they want to have theirs rezoned, okay, but these people that own large tracts of land are not getting paid anything for people to drive up and down the road and say, "Oh, isn't that pretty?" And I don't live in that end of the county, and I've just seen some other ends of the county that's got a lot more prettier sites. We don't waste as much time mowing grass as some people do, but we, we see just as pretty sites. But I can't see any need in forcing zoning on someone else's property.
I understand. That's not in this one. We'll talk about that at 19. Is any, any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Pose no, motion carries. Thank you. Item 14. You're welcome to stay with us if you'll be quiet, or you can leave, and I'll take a recess, whichever you'd like to do. Your call. We'll take a recess while you leave. Thank you. Preliminary plat, preliminary sketch plan review for Temple Hills, Section 17, located off Temple Road in the 8th Voting District. Staff?
The preliminary sketch plan for this project was last reviewed at the August 2011 meeting. As you might recall, previous legal action mandates that this project be reviewed in accordance with the 1972 zoning ordinance. The sections listed above represent the remaining unbuilt or partially unbuilt sections of this project. The proposed land uses and development options noted above are consistent with plans previously reviewed and approved by this body. This preliminary sketch plan is in order. Approval is recommended with the following stipulations. One, approval of final non-residential site plan, or Section J. And two, approval of, two, approval of the road drainage and erosion control plans by the county engineer and establishment of requisite bond amounts in conjunction with final plat reviews. Three, approval of water and sewer plans by Harpeth Valley Utility Districts and the establishment of the requisite bond amounts in conjunction with final plat reviews. Four, confirmation of access protocol for private road systems. Five, establishment of minimum lowest floor elevations and critical lot designations where appropriate on the final plats. And six, approval of HOA documents establishing maintenance responsibilities for all common elements, including open space and private road systems, by the county attorney for planning and environment in conjunction with final plat considerations.
Thank you, Mike. Questions, staff? Jack?
For the record, Temple Hills is in the 9th Voting District.
Ooh, I missed that. Thank you. Anything else?
I don't want to get credit where credit's not due.
This is our only trip to the Supreme Court right here.
Still move for approval with recommendations, staff.
Most maiden second. Any further discussion? I see none. All in favor, say aye. Pose no, motion carries. Thank you. Item 15. Preliminary plat review for Hillsborough Cove containing 20 lots on 34.09 acres located off Old Hillsborough Road in the 9th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A concept plan for this 20-lot traditional subdivision was reviewed at the June 2013 meeting. A preliminary plat for the development was deferred by this body at the August 2013 meeting. Issues that were raised during the meeting and via correspondence from members of the community included consistency with the comprehensive plan, traffic, and flooding concerns. Staff does not believe the proposed development is inconsistent with the county's comprehensive land use plan. As discussed at the concept plan stage, the traffic shed analysis performed by the applicant indicates that the proposed number of lots is within acceptable limits based upon the capacity of existing roadways. With respect to the flooding issue, all building lots are located outside of the currently mapped 100-year flood plain as required by the zoning ordinance. Additionally, since the last meeting, the applicant has revised the preliminary plat to indicate that the finished floor elevation for all lots within the 500-year flood plain will be at least one foot above the flood level experienced on the property during the historic 2010 flood event. Because the plat has been found to meet all applicable county requirements, staff recommends approval of this preliminary plat. In conjunction with final plat consideration, the following items must be addressed. One, prior to final plat submission, the applicant shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The approved HOA documents must be recorded prior to the recording of the final plat. Two, prior to final plat submission, the deceleration lane at the side entrance must be completed in accordance with the approved plans. Three, establishment of a performance bond for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Four, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements as specified by HB and TS Utility District. Five, submission of landscaping plans and establishment of a performance bond for landscaping improvements. Six, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And seven, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat. And, Mr. Chairman, as with item 13, you do have some correspondence in front of you that relates to this item.
Jack?
The acceleration lane, is that also a turning lane in Old Hillsborough Road? Is that what we're talking about, or...?
Yes, sir. It's a, it's a right-turn lane into the project as you approach from the south.
Looks like it would be more needed to a left-turn lane approaching from the north, if I visualize.
Right, right. Well, they're proposing a D-cell lane, a right-turn lane. Our zoning ordinance specifies that until you get to 50 lots, they don't have to... Our zoning ordinance specifies that until you get to 50 lots, they don't have to either provide a left-turn lane or do a warrant analysis to justify whether or not that's required.
Anyone else? Mr. Crowhain?
Will this deceleration lane be required before the building starts, before the houses are sold?
The recommendation is that the deceleration lane be constructed prior to the time that they submit a final plat for the development.
The other thing I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, is in due respect to the experts on this, I personally feel 20 lots on this route, this is a bad road along there to put more traffic out on. And I know it was mentioned that a lot of traffic has been going a different direction, but out of West Haven and through there, there's a lot of traffic on that road. And I think with my estimation, this is a mistake without improvement on Old Hillsborough Road. Thank you.
Anyone else? While you're thinking, we actually have, as a procedural matter, have three alternatives. As you know, this was deferred from last month. Our regulations require that we must act on a deferment, or it is approved. So you can... No action is an approval if there's not a motion. Or you can approve it, or you can disapprove it. So you have three alternatives. I just want to make sure that was clear. I think what we have is a lot of folks, obviously, opposed. We have a plat that meets every zoning requirement, every subdivision requirement, has no variances, provides things. Then recently, the flood elevation concern was remedied. It's basically, if you turn it down, I think it's a trip down to the courthouse. So I think that's where we stand, folks, in our obligations to abide by our rules.
Still move if we move for approval with recommendations, staff?
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? I hear none? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 16. Preliminary plant review for Arrington Retreat, Phase 2 revised, containing 30 lots on 17.08 acres located off Nongal Road in the 5th voting district. Staff?
A site plan for this development was approved in February of 2003. Phase 2 of this development, which contained 38 lots on 20.58 acres, was approved at the June 2013 meeting. The applicant is now requesting revised preliminary plat approval for this phase of the development, which now consists of 30 lots on 17.08 acres. The proposed preliminary plat is identical in layout to that depicted on the approved site plan. As identified at site plan review, a number of items were to be addressed at the preliminary plat stage. All applicable items have been addressed to staff satisfaction, including identification of critical lots and placement of applicable notes on the plat. The applicant is requesting a right-of-way width variance from 50 feet to 40 feet and a design speed variance from 30 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour on the curve of Great Angelica Way near the intersection of Crescent Moon Circle. The plat is in order, and staff recommends approval of the plat and the requested variances. In conjunction with final plat approval, the following items will need to be addressed. Prior to final plat consideration, the applicant shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The approved HOA documents must be recorded at the same time as the recording of the final plat. Number two, establishment of a performance bond for roads, drainage and erosion control. Number three, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Nolanville College Grove Utility District. Number four, establishment of a performance bond for the wastewater collection system. Number five, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And number six, providing two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the final plat.
Thank you, Aaron. Questions? Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item 17. Establishment of landscape bond for Glenn's Grocery located off Payton's Road in the 12th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A site plan for this use has been reviewed by staff. Staff is currently awaiting corrections to the site plan prior to approval being granted. However, due to the cost of installing the required landscaping and pursuant to Section 16.07 of the zoning ordinance, the landscape bond must be established by the planning commission. Staff recommends the establishment of a performance bond for landscaping in the amount of $5,115.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion? Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of planning commission meeting schedule. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, pretty much a standard schedule. Only two seminal deadlines will differ from our normal agenda deadlines in that they will be... They're designed to work around the holiday seasons on both next December and next November. And we'd recommend approval.
Everybody going to be here for all those? Thank you. Is there a motion? Is there a second in that? Thank you. Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The motion carries. Thank you. Oh, man, I got to read these again. Here we go. Item 19. Request to consider initiation of amendment due to 2013 official zoning maps regarding the following maps, parcels and zoning districts. To initiate a rezoning from suburban infill and conservation to rural preservation RP5, tax map 38, parcels 3.02, 3.03, 6.0, 7.0, 8.0, 9.0, 10.0 and 12.01. To initiate rezoning from rural preservation 1 to rural preservation 5, tax map 38, parcels 20.01, 20.05, 21.0, 22.0, 22.01, 24.05 and 24.12. To initiate rezoning from rural preservation 1 to rural preservation 5, tax map 51, parcels 11.0 and 11.09. Staff?
Section 4.03 of the county's zoning ordinance outlines the ways in which an application to amend the county's official zoning map may be initiated. In addition to initiation by a property owner, which was the case with item 13 on this agenda, the ordinance specifies that the county commission or planning commission may initiate an amendment by motion. County Commissioner Mary Brockman has requested that the planning commission consider initiating an application for a map amendment in order to rezone 18 properties along Old Hillsborough Road from their present zoning, which is a combination of suburban infill and conservation and rural preservation 1, to rural preservation 5. It should be noted that since the closing of this month's agenda, staff has received a number of signed petitions from owners of additional properties within this area. These properties, along with any others received by the applicable deadline, will be placed on the October planning commission agenda regardless of the action taken on this item. If the planning commission chooses to initiate the map amendment, the application will be placed on the October agenda as a public hearing item. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll direct you again to the map that's on the screen and that's in front of you. This request is that you consider initiating a map amendment for the properties that are shown in a color other than green. There are some properties that we do have a petition for. Those are represented in yellow. And the properties where the owner has not made this request are illustrated in red. Finally, as with some other items, you do have some correspondence in front of you that relates to this item.
Thank you, sir. Questions, staff? Don?
Just to get it clear in my mind, Mr. Chairman, the people, the ones in red, the people have been approached and they have declined? Is that correct? Or they haven't been approached?
I can't answer that. Staff? I don't know whether they've been approached or turned it down, or none of the above.
I don't know either, Mr. Crowhain. I simply know that we've received petitions from the owners in yellow. We have not received petitions from the property owners in red.
Have they been sent letters, or have they been notified of this?
Well, this isn't a county-initiated request. This is a request that has been initiated elsewhere, and so it's simply on your agenda with the request to rezone these properties, some of which we have petitions for, some of which we don't. But I don't know what efforts were made to discuss this with the owners.
Will there be steps taken before it comes before us?
Any rezoning would require public notice, posting of signs, advertisement in the paper, public hearing before this body, and ultimately before the county commission.
Thank you.
Pete?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If we changed the rezoning to five acres, would there be anything wrong with changing to 15 or 20 or 25?
Say... Do what now? Say that again.
There's no end to this.
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, regardless of the outcome of the vote, the ones that have requested petitions will be on next month's agenda in a different item?
That is correct. The owners of property who requested the rezoning, they don't need you all to initiate that. They can initiate it, and in fact, they have initiated it through their petition.
The ones in yellow?
The ones in yellow.
Okay. Thank you.
I think... Excuse me? Mr. Murdock?
Just a quick question. This can be initiated here at the county commission level, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I ask that question because this is fairly sensitive issue, and I think it's one that the elected officials need to take a bite of first.
Susan?
I just wanted to say, I'm glad to see that property owners that are in favor of downzoning, I'm glad to see them be able to do that. However, I don't support anyone being forced to downzone without their consent, so I can't support this initiative.
Anyone else? No, I'm going to make a statement, too. I agree with Susan. You know, we have one group that says, "Hey, we want to downzone." That's fine. I support that. I'm all for you. But don't tell the other folks they have to do the same thing. And I'm not doing this for applause, folks. I can... I appreciate it, but you don't need to. It is almost like a taking when you do that, when you get a petition up for people who don't want to be there. And I don't know about the red ones either, Don, but they got till next week to get in the hunt if they'd like to. So I'm not going to be concerned about them. If they don't want to, I say we leave them out. We can leave this and table it if you don't support taking in the red ones and let them come back with their own petition and we don't deal with it any further. Is that not right, Mike?
I think if you're...
If we do not support the document before us to zone all of these, if we deny it tonight, the ones in green and the ones in yellow can come back next... The ones in yellow can come back next month.
If you deny the request, then all the items in yellow plus additional properties who join can come in.
Sure. And that's not... That sounds like a silly approach to deny it so they can come back next month, but that gives them the opportunity to answer Don's question, one. If they want to be in it, fine, I'll support that. But if you don't, I'm going to support the ones that don't. We can go either way unless there's... Staff, some more discussion? Am I clear? Am I making muddy in the water? Don San? Robin?
I support Susan and yourself. I live on the opposite side of the county, and I've got 12 and a half acres, and I wouldn't want someone to tell me what I can and cannot do with my land. And we've got a... It was 90 acres across from us when we moved out there, and it was beautiful. Loved the hillside. And there's a subdivision there now. I wasn't real happy about it at the time, but the builder took the considerations of the area, and it's actually a really nice subdivision. It's... They took the considerations of the landscape of the area, and I'm hoping, you know, whatever happens out there anyways. So I agree with you, Susan and John, that, you know, people should have the... If they want to change theirs, that's fine, but you shouldn't, you know, put everybody in that position without their say-so.
And anyone else? I'm not trying to cut you off. We'll stay as long as we need. Pardon?
My point about the subdivision across the street, it was 90 acres, and that was their choice. You know, they've lived there a long time, and if they wanted to sell it and have a nice subdivision in there, then that was their choice. And I was, you know, I was fine with their choice for their own land.
Anyone else? Comments? Thoughts? Take a motion if you're done. Motion denies or second? Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. I think we have finished our agenda, folks. By my count, is there a motion to adjourn? We're out of here. Thank you. See? I didn't mean to shift gears on y'all in the middle of the screen, but that all of a sudden it gave me... That'll answer all the questions. Let them bring it back that way.